Sorry.
We'll call the select board meeting for Wednesday, February 16th, 2021 to order. We have John Muskevitz, Joyce Chungalo, Jane Nevin Smith, and David Phil here. Amy will not be here tonight. This meeting is being recorded and all votes will be taken via roll call. Tonight, we're going to go right into executive session and we will reconvene in open session afterwards and continue on with the rest of the business on the meeting. Let's see, I'll read the-
Oh, do I need to do a motion to go into executive session?
Let me read this real quick. Select Board will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20A3, "To discuss litigation regarding the matter of Hieronymus Peter versus Town of Hadley, where discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position, and the Chair so declares." So I need a motion to go to executive session?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session and to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Jane. As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the Board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the Town of Hadley. And Jennifer, roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Muskevitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and this should be relatively quick for everybody that's waiting, so we'll try to be as quick as possible. All right, well, thank you for everybody for waiting. Sorry it took a little longer, but we just needed to get that out of the way. Next on the agenda, we have a tri-board meeting, 3.1 FY '23 budget presentation. And hopefully, everyone hasn't fallen asleep and Finance Committee is still here. Dr. McKenzie's here, so hopefully some others are. There's Valerie. All right, Amy Dillon. All right, it looks like everybody's here. All right, so Carolyn, do you want to start?
Yeah, just for technical purposes, can the Finance Committee call your meeting to order?
Okay, so I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Today is the 16th at 6:28. Excellent.
Have them vote.
Oh, you want to vote? Okay.
Yep.
All right, can Jennifer, you want a roll call?
I would love to. Soon as you make a motion with first and second.
I have a motion, please.
A motion.
Second, Val. You're muted, Val.
Sorry, I seconded.
Okay, roll call vote. Iden?
Yes.
Hood? Valerie?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I've got Alexi kind of texting me and he's gonna try to join us as soon as he can.
Mans Barstow, is that right?
Yes, Barstow Mans.
Barstow Mans, thank you. And that's a yes?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let me go ahead, David?
Go ahead.
Everybody's here, and I just want to recognize Annie's here as well, so. All right, good evening, everybody. It's been two and a half months of preparing this budget for you that you're going to see. I'm going to be tag teaming a little bit with Linda tonight, and I just wanted to thank the in-house finance team who has been so helpful. Every single Tuesday, I've shared this before, that they have met and we have gone over our budgets, our revenues, our year-to-date. And I just want to thank them so much for helping us get to this point. They kind of teed it up, Susan, Dan, Linda, they teed this up so I could present this. So, what I'm going to do is, we're going to take a look at the budget, where the increases are, and then it's going to lead into Linda telling you how we're going to pay for it. So, that's what we're going to do. I'm not going line item by line item with this presentation. I'm going to go division by division, and I'm going to highlight what the increases are and then give you a general overview of what reflects some of those increases. I do want to just give this a little bit of a preface. I met with every single department and boards that had a bigger budget, and Linda assisted me with the larger budgets, where we literally went line item by line item. I have to thank the department heads and those chairs of those boards because we really, I did, I don't want to share the blame management approach to this, and we went line item by line item. And then we went year-to-date on their expenses, which would have brought us up to like January 1st, to see where they were and to see if they were spending that money, and if not, why? Or if they were overspending a line item, why? Trying to just steer everybody into that, to be able to budget that line item appropriately and not just worry about the bottom line of that budget balancing. We had some new staff and some new support staff that sat in some of those meetings, and it helped them immensely. And I truly believe after doing this for two years that we're going to be good next year. This, I think that the budgets that came to us, and remember, I just asked them what they needed. I didn't give them any guidelines, I didn't give them a certain percentage. You guys authorized me, we're okay with that. And I just want to thank the department heads, they were extremely, extremely respectful of that. There are increases, if you remember, we've kind of been stagnant for three years and suppressed in trying to match any of our growth needs to the budget based on the impact of COVID. And I just can't tell you enough how patient they were, so I just wanted to thank them and acknowledge that. So, Linda, if you can pull up-
Carolyn, can I just mention that there wasn't anything that I could print off of? I wasn't able to get a hard copy of anything to have in hand. I know you're going to show it on your screen tonight, but there wasn't anything I could print out to have in my hand to review afterwards. Is there going to be anything that-
Yeah, you're going to get the, yup, you're going to get the whole book with every breakdown of every department. We're going to try to have it ready for next week. And honestly, we were working on this up until about 15, quarter or six. So, it's been, numbers change, and we just constantly were reviewing what we had worked on, so.
Okay.
Yes, that hard, that big white notebook you will be getting with the details. But we thought this approach, I could just highlight where some of those increases are and what's behind those increases, and also some areas of concern that I have that we'll be looking to address, but.
Okay, so. Thank you.
There we go. So, if you remember, David Nixon broke down, did a budget series and broke down pretty much divisions and categories. So, that's where I've, that's what we're looking at right now. And so, we can go, you know what, Linda, I can't see that last, let me move my guy.
Which one? Okay, can you see the big?
Yeah, I just have to move all you people around.
Yeah, I can't see what you see, so it's-
Oh, okay, it's okay.
So, let me know. It should start where you can see general as a fund as the lead-in, and the last column is the change, the white column change FY '22 to '23, is that showing?
I'm seeing that, yes.
Okay.
Everybody else's as well. So, I'm just going to show you, and there's going to be further down in my presentation, kind of break down a little bit, even go into a deeper level of what these increases reflect. But you can see general government, we've got that, $38,467. You can see a significant increase, $375,478 with public safety. Education, so I just want to remind you that the school has been, the school committee has been extremely generous the past two years. This is, so this is a very modest number based on what they haven't asked us for and given back to us. Public Works is up $94,000. Human Services, $25,000, which is library, COA, recreation, I think I've got them all, right? Nope, culture and recreation, so COA is just human services and Board of Health, maybe. Sorry, I don't have my breakdown right in front of me. And Linda did really want me to show you that there was no increase in debt payment. She was very proud of that. And the benefits and other, and we're going to talk a little bit about these, some of these costs that we can't control. Next one?
So, you want to see the second breakdown of it?
Yeah, do you have anything to add to that last one?
No, that's good. This is, if you recall, last year, we went through, and it's a very long chart of every single department, and with the, these are the subtotals for each of the sections. So, we thought this would be a better way to give an overview of what it is rather than getting bogged down in the details of each department. But as Joyce mentioned, you do like to see everything, and you will be getting every department's budget very shortly, as soon as we can. So, I think that's it for this section. I will move it to... Now, I don't, I think that you wanted to start with-
Yeah, that.
The different way of seeing the breaking down the budget increases.
Yeah, I really like this. I think it just kind of, it was easier to see what the increases were in the impact on the budget. And what I wanted to point out is, as you can see, the benefits, OPEB, and the school budget, we get that bottom line, that is, and the general expense increases, a lot of these expenses take up the bulk. It's two-thirds of the budget. And benefits in OPEB, and we can't control those costs. Those, we, it is what it is, so that we can't control that increase, and that's a huge increase. The general expense increase, that is basically looking at everything else besides salary amongst the town. And you guys know in your own house, the fuel's going up, your groceries are going up, supplies. We definitely have, we're dealing with supply chain issues. So, we have had a significant expectation and prediction of the increase in fuel and as well as all the other supplies that impact all of the budgets. And then, I wanted to show you the pretty significant difference in the impact of public safety. When we meet with the Finance Committee, we're going to, I'm going to dig a little deeper and try and go over what's impacting public safety. I think some of you are going to be aware of what some of that is. But we are seeing extremely high turnover. We've got to address that, and that is one of my areas of concern, is where our public safety is with wages and the culture right now. It's a very difficult environment to be working in right now, and mandates from the state that are going to be coming up for training and for officers. So, we, you know, it's something that we're going to be continuing to address.
So, is that why, that why that's blank there on the public safety? Because I was hoping to, I know eventually down the road, we will address that, and that's my goal also. But I see a blank spot there.
That's part of the, if you put other town departments and public safety together, that's the 304 to 68.
Right, but it wasn't what was in public safety totally. These are just the increases.
Just the increases.
Okay, yeah, that'll have, we'll do further. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's 304. Towns is the total of the increases on the town side, and by that, I just mean not the school, because school is within their budget. And so, two-thirds of that, more than that, I guess, of the staffing increases is in public safety, and the other town departments together are the 84, so that's 304. And. Okay. Yup.
All right, so then we can go to the next-
Carolyn, can I ask a question about the public safety? Would you say, have you heard from other towns? Are all towns struggling with this issue with-
Yeah, I can, absolutely. Unfortunately, it's the smaller towns that are getting impacted by it. There is, you know, Mike has incredible, did an incredible presentation of how the small towns are getting impacted. The police reform bill in itself had, I think there was like 180 different categories, and a lot of the requirements are not funded. There's no funding for it. And it's, it's very stressful right now for the police officers as well, and we are having a significant turnover. We lost four officers in three months, and they're going to higher-paying towns, and not easy towns to work in. And we, it's a huge cost for Hadley to bring on a new officer, train them, get them in the academy, do the mentoring, get the certifications. It's a significant cost to the town. So, it is, it's definitely an area that I am concerned about, and we will need to address as a town. We've just got to find a solution, but right now, this is what we could fit in the budget. So.
We'll still- Did you want?
Yeah, I mean, I talked a little bit about this, but one of the things I wanted to talk about really is if, looking at the town hall and other department wages, these aren't, there might be one person, one position, the COA. Jane is, I don't know if you know, but Jane works like full-time over, for free, over at the COA. And what we're seeing, and I have seen it in my past job, is you don't see Jane volunteers anymore. And what's happening is you have a need to replace that with paid staff. The volunteers now that are coming up are like, I'll work a couple hours here, I'll work a couple hours there, and there's going to be a huge gap when Jane steps away from that role. So, the COA has requested some admin assistance to kind of fill that gap. So, that is probably the only new position. The rest of them are looking at the skills that we have in town. You have some talented employees where we can start to share some positions, but it means adding some hours. We did have one position that was in building inspection that had been paid for by the CARES Act, and she has turned into being extremely valuable employee, and we're looking at having her help planning department. Planning is really looking to get more assistance, so we're just looking at trying to share some of these positions. So, this part was kind of exciting actually, to see what skills we had in town and to have even a couple hours from an employee who isn't at 37 and a half, do some work for another, to assist another department. So, this is how we're chipping away at some of the lack of assistance that has, hasn't, we haven't had some, the assistance that we've needed for some of these departments.
Can you just chip away a little bit, not going into full detail, because this is just an overview tonight? Why the Board of Health for $22,000, what does that entail?
So, Board of Health right now, so first, the very first thing I'm going to say, which you guys all know, is Route 9 in Hadley is West Springfield, Riverdale Road in West Springfield, or Memorial Drive. So, in a town this size, we have been relying, we did it for a year, I think, because the board members that you've had in the past several years, you've had working board members who had that skill set, who could be doing the inspections. But as your, as that board has changed, you don't have that skill set anymore. And for all of the establishments you have, you have, I think Jennifer, we figured it was about 180 food establishments. To not have a health agent is really, it's an important thing to have in the town. So, we've been contracting out with a company called Western Mass Food Safety to do a very limited amount of inspections. They do about 100 annual inspections. They do some pools, some other, some other things that fit under the health inspection. But it's not enough for Hadley, it really isn't. And so, we are looking to, the Board of Health has requested to get a health agent instead of the contract, and it's really just about the same price that it's for that cost. But there will be obviously some additional costs needed for that. But they are in really desperate need for a health agent to do those inspections.
So, were we paying this other agency to do our inspection so that this money is going into that $22,000?
Yes, it is.
That's all I needed to know.
Okay. All right.
About library and parking rec?
Library, the trustees had put a, added some hours to their youth coordinator, I don't know if that's the exact name, but the youth program coordinator, they had brought that part-time position up to 27 in the fall, which they have the authority to do. So, but we now need to bring it before the town to support that increase in services. And then, what was the other one you said, Parks and Reg? We hired Greg for 30 hours. Greg has brought in an incredible increase in programs. Look at the skate park. I mean, that is just, to me, that is just amazing to see that when you drive through town, and now there's lights. That's just, that's just a small portion of what he's brought. He is working, he is trying to keep it into 30 hours, but he is here almost every night, whether if it's a basketball game, he's got adult basketball going on, he's starting programs, he's going to have a February vacation camp. He is doing a ton with, and again, another board that has changed, where you have board members coming in who are not that board member who's coming into the office and doing work. Those days are gone. These, like, life has changed. So, he's doing everything right now, from all the admin, all the registration, everything.
So, are we looking to increase that to 40 hours?
To 37 and a half, to 37 and a half right now.
Yup, that's fine with me, no problem.
And they also got the board members that are doing a little bit more than they should too. So, they're putting in extra time, they're starting better programs, and they're really moving forward with it quite well.
Yup. Okay. And wages, that's just fire, that's just with the annual, is that?
That's the EMT.
EMT, okay.
That goes together with starting the, getting the ambulance on the road. So, I don't know what the timing is for the two, but they should be coming together about the same time.
Yup, okay. Sounds good. Is that one dispatcher? One, I think it is one dispatch and one or two officers or one and a half?
It's a officer and I think a sergeant.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then, a dispatch. Oh. Okay.
All right, so Linda, I think in my, handing this back over to you, right?
Yeah.
You're going to show us how we're going to get there.
Yeah. Here's the fun part. Okay, so this is, this is a summary, year by year, going back to FY '19. Let me start with where we are right now. We have revenues of about $18.6 million. I'm going to flip over to that just briefly. Again, I'm not showing you that big, long chart of where all these numbers come from. These are the general categories, and you'll be getting both. But rather than go through that tonight, our property taxes, $13.8 million. They're going up about the same as they did the year before, with I believe some extra, some extra new growth and some add-ons like that. State aid hasn't been going up as much as we feel that it ought to, given that they're supposed to be doing well too. So, we're hopeful that that will increase, but there's a small increase from '22 there now. Our biggest jump has been in local receipts. We're expecting to have three point, we're projecting $3.4 million in local receipts. As you can see, we've projected-
Linda, could you shrink the screen slightly so we can see that last column?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Thank you, perfect. Whoops.
Yeah, right, okay, you know what, I have to change a origin here. Let's see if that helps. Can you see all of that?
Almost.
Okay.
Keep changing the margin.
Actually, Jane, it might be your computer.
But even so, she, it might not just be hers. If others, if it's happening to her, it's happening to others, and I want to make sure people can see.
If you could put our pictures across the top instead of down the side, that would also take care of it.
Oh, I didn't know that you could see where my pictures are.
I think, Jane, Jane, you have to do that. Jane, if you hover your mouse over the top of the people and click on that black thing, you can move it around. You're going to have to move it as she goes through it.
Okay.
Right now, that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, those are your pictures. Okay, is this visible now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I went through taxes, state aid, okay, local receipts, $3.4 million we're projecting. This year, we projected $2.7. At this point in the year, we already have $1.7 million in, which is over, which is 64% of our annual project, projection. Earlier years, the last two years, we had 40 and 50% of our annual, of our projection in by the end of January. So, we are doing well there, and we felt pretty comfortable. As you'll see, as you know from all the lines that we have that go into local receipts, that includes hotel, motel, the marijuana, the cannabis, and then all the collections from the departments and various other pilot payments. That's a large category that, am I in the right place? Okay. And there, really, everything literally is looking healthy. So, if you can compare that a little bit more going back, we had, we had actually collected $2.8 million last year. And then our last, what we call our last good year, you know, 20 before we got into COVID, we were at $3.183 million. So, this is the first time then in three years that we're going to be able to exceed FY '20, and we should do well there. So, that puts us at $18,178,120. Then we do the enterprise chargebacks, which we're using the same formula we have the last couple of years as best, as best as I can, and I'm coming in a little bit lower in that area. So, the amount of revenues that we're starting with, without any other transfers, without using free cash or anything else, the actual revenues for the Town's General Fund is $18,612,043. So, I'll go back over to that summary page. There you go. There's the 18,6 in revenues. And then the budget with the increases that were shown is coming in at $19,424. That leaves a gap of $812,938. That's, we never like seeing these gaps, but look back over the last few years. This is, this is, this is how it's been going for us. This is just a request column, ignore that column, I'm sorry. But this past year, at this time, or going into, or going into town meeting to balance the budget, we had a gap between straight revenues and expenditures of one, over $1 million. The year before, almost $1.3 million. That's not what we were aspiring to, those are the problems that we were dealing with. So, you would see, we actually have significantly less of a problem right now, and we are intentionally making some increases in the budget. So, that's, that's, that's better than we've been for a while. This is really where we'd rather be, where we were in '20. That's, there was a deliberate effort. I recently went back to '19, because I do remember so much, we were making an effort to close the gap between revenues and expenditures. And look at the progress we were making before COVID hit. We had a gap of $700,019, and then only $300,020. That's where we want to be. So, if we think of this '23 as our new '19, hopefully, we're going to continue to go in that direction. That is, that is where we ought to be. But honestly, I don't think I ever remember us really coming in at that point. So, how, what do we do when we have those gaps? Or actually, yeah, what we do is, here's our categories over here, transfers from other funds. We have in the past used stabilization. That worked for us, and we were able to fill it in this past year. Our stabilization account has fully recovered. So, we do, we do work on these. Free cash, we've pretty much always used free cash to balance the budget. We are trying to use less free cash. And let me get back to that in just a moment. And this last year, this last, this past year, when we had the ARPA funds that we received from, from the government, we were able to use a portion of it in what's called a revenue replacement funding, and that really saved our skin in FY '22, that we were able to use the ARPA replacement funds and bridge that gap fully. What we're proposing for this year is, we have one more year of ARPA. We clearly have to wean off of it because there isn't- We clearly have to wean off of it because it isn't gonna be there for twenty-four. Um, but we, um, so proposing at this point, I mean, these two in yellow here, we can do some fluctuating between them. Um, uh, we've got time between now and town meeting to figure out the right balance for us. But at this point, if we could limit the ARPA, uh, replacement funding to four hundred, we would not only have it for other, have the balance for other projects, more of the balance for other projects, but we might be able to carry some into yet another year if we needed it. But we're still, we, we just wanna do what's, what's right, so we're working on that one. And now free cash, uh, at this point is about four hundred and ten thousand for balancing the budget. And let me tell you the difference between this free cash figure and this one, and this one, and this one, that we've used in every year. This year, the free cash we're using is what's already been certified. This is the balance of what was certified in July one last year. In every other year, what we've been doing is, see this line called anticipator rollbacks? At this point, we've been carrying a figure in the anticipator rollbacks line because that's what we expect to come back into the account at the end of this year. This is what budgets are going to turn back. They don't fully spend their money and we'd be getting several hundred thousand dollars there. We've been counting on that to come back into the funds and then get that certified for July one so that in the fall, we can then use that newly certified free cash to balance the budget. We are one year ahead of the game in that category right now. This is the balance of what was certified last year. So that means we still have anticipator rollbacks ahead of us. We might have the startup capital fund in the, come fall. Or we might be able to get a, a jump on, or maybe, maybe we'll decide to use less in ARPA, but we'll have some options there. Um, but the better we do with our revenue planning, our expenditure planning, we, we also risk that maybe our rollbacks won't be so, quite so high because we're can, we're, we're getting, uh, we're getting more precise in the budgeting. So there's that. So we can't count on, uh, five hundred thousand coming back in the way we have in other years because we're pitching the budgets a bit more, but, but something will come back. This is, this is just how it works. So, um, so that's how we would plan to get at what this point is eight hundred and twelve. And I'm sure by the time, we, we're working out a couple of things with other, uh, with a few departments. Uh, tomorrow, I expect, we'll get the budgets out to every department. So in case there were any mistakes, uh, corrections, they'll get back to us. So they will have it, um, we will have it, uh, solidified by the time we put it into the budget book. But this is where we stand at the moment. Um, and just as, um, just as another interesting thing, cause I like, um, when you see our revenue increase, uh, between, from twenty-two to twenty-three, our revenue increase is one point four million dollars. So even as we look at the budget increase, which is almost one point two million dollars, that's a big increase. But so is this a big increase and are actually, the revenue increase is actually two hundred and thirty-three thousand higher than the budget increase, which means we're going in the right direction, they're going to come together. And this is the plan. We, um, we're, there is more of a leap this year in recognition of things really being suppressed and some, um, problems that have resulted, that have come about, particularly in public safety, as a result of, of our holding back. Some of these things have to be addressed and Carol's been really careful about that and you learn more about that in the budget. As we go through the budget, uh, you go through your review, finance committee, blackboard. And, um, um, I think is, I think that's, uh, that's about it. I'll go and leave it on the, the summary if you have any questions up here. Otherwise I can close screen and you can move on. Questions?
No questions from me, but just wanted to say that this looks really great. Thanks for all the hard work. All these numbers look like they're going in the right direction, so it's, it's good to see.
I like the way you organized the information. It was able, I felt like I was able to take it all in. I appreciate that.
We feel like it'll, it'll make, it'll be easier when you go back into the details, that you had the overview and then you're going into the details instead of the other way around.
Exactly.
Yeah, so excited to dig into the details.
Do you have any stabilization monies, uh, what the balances are right now, Linda? Or is that gonna be in our book next week?
Uh, the, the balance. Didn't I say, Carolyn, someone's gonna ask me tonight?
Yeah, she did. You had it. I thought you had it.
Yeah, two, uh, two million, forty-five thousand.
Okay, that's good, we're over two, that's good.
Yes.
And how, how are the enterprises, Linda?
Uh, the enterprises, um, should we move over to that now then? Uh, the enterprise. Where did that one go? Uh, the enterprise funds, uh, the water and the sewer, uh, working through the, working through the DPW budgets have been what have been taking us, uh, us the longest, because you know there was change. Though, and, um, and getting, uh, control of those budgets again, not control, I mean, not out of control, but I mean, getting a handle on it for, for planning purposes has been a little bit more, more difficult. Um, we do have them reasonably balanced, however, I mean, they're, they're balanced and they're not, it's not a big, not a big problem, let me just scoot and have a look here. Um, if I have the um, I think the difference in, at this point, this is sort of a sneak peek, the budget's two point four, um, they're okay, I mean, that's the best I can say right now. They're, they're really okay. So if I look at sewer where we have, uh, revenues of one, and I don't have the same charts ready, but I hope I will have them for your book. Sewer there, one point oh five two versus one point oh six two with the, with the, with the reserves. Uh, we were working at getting that down. Uh, water has a bit, a bit more of a gap in it. I can't remember exactly how much, but they are, their expenditures are coming in above, higher than the water revenues are. However, that has a much larger reserve account. And public access is, uh, we're, we're really not getting, we're really gonna be running into it an issue there in the next couple of years because their expenses are increasing as well and we don't have the same revenue source for that. Um, as we do for the other. Um, um, not quite as fully prepared on that one. I certainly have been working the numbers on that one, but it is looking like the, the receipts will cover the revenue expenditure, the planned expenditures this year in the budgets and, um, we'll dip into the reserves a bit. Uh, but we're not, we're not in deep trouble in that way. And I guess I was counting on when we get to, uh, we're going to be addressing more in the, uh, water and sewer accounts over the next few weeks and that I would pull these figures together in more of a summary fashion, uh, as we did with the general fund, when you're having that discussion. If I could have another week or two.
Fine, it's just, gives, gives me a general idea, Linda, thank you.
And how far out are we on, uh, contract with cable? Uh, Caroline, do you know? The new contract for cable, it's coming up pretty soon, next year or two, isn't it?
Um, David, you might have more information on that, I think we're further than that.
Yeah, I think it's twenty twenty-four, but we, we already started the, the long process of notifying Spectrum that we're going through the formal renewal process with, uh, surveys will be going out to residents about problems or feedback on their current service and seeing what they can do to, uh, correct issues or if we wanna go a different direction.
Is this an opportunity to get a different, uh, computer internet provider besides Beckham? Is that what you're suggesting?
It, it's like everything in regulated industries, it's somewhat complicated, uh, possibly. But, uh, we basically have to show that they have not provided the level of service that they promised the town in order to drop them and go to somebody else. So that's, that's the importance of the surveys and, uh, getting resident feedback. If we can say, hey, look, you've got slow service every day during dinnertime or whatever, uh, what are you gonna do to fix it? And they say, well, we can't fix it, then, you know, things like that are a reason to maybe make a switch to a different company. But it, it, it's a pretty complex mess to do the cable contract.
Uh, to do negotiations with them is, is hard.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe anyone, who knows, at this point, it's hard to say.
Hmm.
Um, Linda, why, why I have you here? Occasionally I still get questions from people about stabilization. Um, wanting to know for sure that we pay back everything that we took out during COVID. And we're a hundred percent, put the money back, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just that way, hopefully people see it and stop asking the question. So we did that at, uh, special town meeting, is when we put the money back, right?
We did that in the fall, seven hundred and fifty thousand went back in the fall.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I know it's not on share screen right now, but, uh, let's see. We had taken out five hundred thirty. Took out three hundred and six, oh, but this is the second, that was the second, uh, payback that we had done. We voted, uh, in spring town meeting, we put back a hundred and eighty-three. And then we put back another seven hundred and fifty. So that covers the eight hundred and, yeah, yes, the answer's yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes and yes.
All right. Well, any, anybody else have any questions for finance, Carolyn, Linda?
I don't have any questions. I was like, this was the approach that was helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Versus going department by tech department at this level.
Yeah, I, I really liked the way the information was organized and I also, I actually really appreciated going over it for the first time with everybody together. So it's much more meaningful, it's much better use of my time than just reading it by myself and having questions and not really knowing the answers right away, you know, and before me. So I, I really like this format very much.
The, uh,
Can, can we ask, can I ask Dr. McKenzie if, um, how is the things going over at Hopkins with uh, school choice and things of that nature that, you know, I just would like to get a, a picture of that right now of where, where we set with that or kids going out, kids coming in?
Sure, and Joyce, you can always ask me whatever you would like. See, all of you. Uh, so school choice, I was just looking at those numbers today. Um, we have one hundred and eight students choicing in this year to Hadley Public Schools. Um, I don't have to break down off the top of my head for Hadley Elementary and Hopkins Academy. That is down slightly from last year. I will say in FY nineteen, we had a tremendous turnaround with school choice coming in. Prior to that, we'd been hovering around just over seventy. We hit around ninety-four and ninety-six in FY nineteen, went up to about a hundred and twelve, I think. And so we're at a hundred and eight this year, those are kids coming in. Kids going out, again, we had, uh, several years back, the high point of kids going out, just, uh, in the mid-sixties. And now, uh, this year, I think we have forty, my estimate right now, and I actually emailed the Department of Ed today to get the exact figures because going out, I don't have in my computer, right? They're not in my system, they're in someone else's system. But my estimate is around forty-five. So I do know for a fact a hundred and eight in, all those students are in my system and about forty-five going out. We have seen a decrease in students leaving for, uh, other kinds of educational experiences. Um, and we're still trying to tackle, um, I'm, I'm grateful that the community has a lot of options, but I will say, I think that if we didn't have a charter option right in our geographic boundaries, we would lose far fewer students. Uh, that's, it does make it a little bit more challenging. So, um, and charters are always, uh, more challenging, not because families shouldn't have the opportunity to exercise whatever choices they think are best for their kids, but because of the way the funding formula works. Um, charters are particularly probably not the schools themselves, but the funding formula, it's different than school choice. Overall, it's good, we have, you know, more school choices working in our favor, but.
How about, how about our children going to Smith-Vogue, Annie, Annie, what's the number?
Uh, that's decreased a bit and I'm always, you know, I also wanna be cautious of how I present this. Again, I support that parents and students should make whatever choices they think make the most sense for them. When we see a high number of students exiting the system for any reason, we sit down and ask ourselves, what could we do to make remaining in Hadley Public Schools more attractive? And I would like to think that some of the things that we have done over the past couple of years, so we've started these various pathways programs, so we have an early college, high school pathway where students can take college, credit-bearing college courses for free. We have, um, innovation pathways where students can do internships and business and finance and the life and environmental sciences and students seem to like this a great deal. This year, we received a grant for a future educators pathway. So these seem to be popular. We have seen a decline in students, uh, exiting for, even for Smith-Vogue. And, but we also recognize that there will always be things that career and technical education does, um, uniquely and, uh, are designed to do that we can offer. But in general, the numbers look good. The, the biggest thing, of course, that all of this region, all of New England faces in K-12 and college education is declining enrollment, particularly when you get outside of urban centers. Um, but even those projections, I'm pleased to say that the company that does our enrollment projections is predicting, uh, slight incremental upticks in births in Hadley. So that's great news, we like to hear that. And that looks like even a couple of years prior, but now it looks as though the projections going into like as far forward as twenty thirty-three look like they may gradually increase in terms of enrollment and births, so that's great news.
So do, do we have, um, has the, uh, um, tuition to Smith-Vogue changed at all? That was the other thing I was, I was wondering about.
Yeah, it does, it changes every year. Uh, I would, um, again, let me underscore that I want everybody to stay in Hadley Public Schools, but I do give credit and gratitude where it's due. So I do believe that Smith-Vogue works very hard to be responsive and responsible to other school districts. So it does go up every year, that's to be expected, but not, um, not in a way that would make you say, oh, my goodness, what the heck are they?
Uh, we, we did have, we did have that at one point when they were doing an increase back where they had, you know, did a quite a big increase, but, you know, you know, we see with the price of everything and, you know, and, and I agree with you. I, I think we try to do the best that we can in Hadley and offer really good things for our students, but there's always going to be kids that are gonna wanna do a trade. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that either. So we try to accommodate everybody and I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so I thank you.
Of course.
Yeah.
Annie, I, I think it probably doesn't hurt to have the wonderful sports programs that we have too.
We do. I mean, I really wanna say, it's my job to be a champion and advocate for the school system in, in Hadley and we have an excellent school system, we have an absolutely excellent school system. But I'm also mindful of the fact that, as I said, that, um, I just, I, I understand that families always have the right to, to figure out what makes the most sense for them. But we do have great schools, we have great sta, uh, great staff, we have small class sizes, we have lots of options and opportunities, we keep trying to do new things. We're offering, um, we're introducing Spanish at the elementary school right now in a very, um, limited way, but every student is getting a little bit of Spanish every week. Uh, we're conscious of the fact that our biggest competition in terms of charter has to do with, uh, a language immersion school. We're certainly not offering language immersion, but we're offering more opportunities and that's been received very well. So we're always trying to expand and, um, do more.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So the process for going forward for the budget, I think last year's worked pretty well where we let the finance committee do their thing as, as the next step. Obviously, we'll get the books with all the fine line details, but, uh, rather than have every department head appear in front of us like we did, I don't know, a few years ago, we spent many, many, many meetings going through every department, line by line. Uh, we'll let the finance committee do their thing and then, um, you know, we'll keep in touch and then if there's anything that a department head needs to, I guess, appeal to us about that the finance committee is saying that absolutely can't be done, then, you know, we can certainly meet and talk about those things. But then we'll get back together, uh, when we get a little bit more fine tuned on this budget and, you know, iron out any rough, rough spots that we need to iron out, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think it's worked well over the last couple of years of the way that finance has done and then brought it back to us. And, you know, if we need to hash things out between the, the two boards, then that's what we do and I think it's worked well. I feel the same way. Any feel the same way? They on the board with that?
On board with that. I think that it works well and um and uh I like it where we uh are able to separate a little bit so we can ask questions. Um it's not too big of a meeting. Um and uh we can just focus on just the one department that night and we don't go through a whole meeting. So I do like it uh have it separate.
Sounds good.
Alright, well, um next we have one last thing for finance. Uh we have a reserve fund transfer. And I'll read this real quick. And so from the select board, um I need a motion to approve a request for a reserve fund transfer to account number one five one five three zero zero for thirty-five thousand dollars for the settlement of Hieronymus V Town of Hadley.
So move that.
Alright, I got Jane and then Joyce, was that a second?
Certainly.
Okay, alright, um any discussion on that? Jennifer, roll call please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Lewis Kevits?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I guess we need the finance committee to also uh vote on that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what the vote is about.
So we have come to a uh settlement agreement on North Hadley Village Hall. And so as part of that settlement agreement, we have to pay some money. And so in order to make that amount, uh we need some of the money out of the reserve fund and transfer it so that way we can uh write a check.
I see. So this isn't the full amount. This is just uh an amount you need to cover.
Yeah, this this is an amount that we need just to to complete the settlement agreement basis.
Okay, thank you.
Where's the money coming from? Is it coming, did you say, to finance reserve?
Yes.
And what was, what will the balance be afterwards?
For for legal, well, for for legal, it's going into a leave the legal account. And that only has about fourteen thousand left, so and we are definitely gonna spend that before the end of the year. So that thirty-five thousand, we we need the full thirty-five thousand.
I think Amy's question was how much is left in the reserve account when we take this out?
Now, nothing has come out of the reserve account. Yeah, and um that was boosted to a hundred thousand at the fall town meeting.
Okay, so that would be the balance.
Thanks, Jane.
So six
Sixty-five.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion on this from the finance committee? Val or uh Dylan or anybody want to make a motion to approve the thirty-five thousand dollar transfer um for the um from the finance reserve?
I'll make a motion to approve the the transfer.
I'll second it.
Okay, so um any other discussion? If we can do a roll call, Jennifer?
Rogue Hall, Fiden?
Yes.
Hood?
Yes.
Barstow Mans?
Yes.
And Lexi, is it Levine or Levine? Levine, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um so that's it for tri board, I believe. So if uh if you guys want to adjourn, that's fine. Or stick around, whatever you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um so we'll keep on going to uh consent agenda. We have warrants AP two-two-three-three, AP two-two-three-three S, AP two-two-three-two S, AP two-two-three-two and PR two-two-one-seven. We have minutes from March third, twenty twenty-one, March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Joint Transportation Committee Appointment, Bill Dewire as a member. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Joint Transportation Committee Alternate Member, Scott McCarthy, and Chapter Ninety Approval.
Can you pull the chapter ninety, please?
Okay, we'll pull chapter ninety.
Alright, so moved. Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Any discussion on this?
Rogue Hall, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
And Wes Kevits?
Yes, except for Scott McCarthy.
Okay, thank you.
And are we not doing chapter ninety tonight or we just want to talk about that separately? Okay. Alright, uh next is public comments, five point one on the agenda. Um we'll do public comments for fifteen minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes each so that others have as opportunity to speak. If you're here for public comments, raise your hand. And Rob Baranowski. You're you're muted, sir.
I'm mute. Hey, that works. So um Rob Baranowski, um many of you remember me from last year on the RV discussions with conservation. Uh just wanted to bring some awareness to what's going on now. Um during the last town meeting, uh bylaw was voted into place. Uh was put in by the planning board calling for an RV offset uh front of the property fifty feet, back of the property forty feet and the sides, it's either ten or fifteen feet. Um currently, uh this is being challenged in a lawsuit. The town has spent about fifty-eight hundred dollars right now and it hasn't even got to trial yet um on this lawsuit. Um and so they're gonna spend a lot more of this and I just wanted to make the town aware of that. You know, again, rather than working with the landowners and the RV owners and coming up with a solution, this was kind of back ended in. It was a surprise even conservation when this was put into the bylaw last year and voted on. And just want to make the town aware of that. This is just gonna be the first of many lawsuits coming up because it's gonna affect again, back to the entire permitting process on the RVs on Longla Riverbank. And after going through town, the way this is written, there are many RVs parked in driveways that are within fifty feet of the road that because of this new ordinance, they're gonna be out of compliance also. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Bill, did you have something? Nope, alright, sorry, sorry you're muted. Uh alright, last call, public comment? Okay, we'll keep going. Uh town administrator report. Carolyn, do you want to do that?
Sure, just some dates. Um just a reminder that um March twenty-fifth is the last day of poll papers for any candidates. Um ju- the good news, I think for everybody, I I'm sitting here on this remote meeting is that the governor has extended remote meetings until July fifteenth.
Isn't that wonderful?
So I just wanted to let you know that. Um and just a reminder that uh at the pre-construction meeting for the Route Nine widening is tomorrow, so Scott and another member of his staff and myself will be attending that. This is not a public meeting, it's not getting updates and things like that. It's really to go, it's a true pre-construction meeting and how it's gonna impact certain things, working closely with DPW. Um but I will get some, I will get, I that is my question. I have spoken with some with the coordinator of this meeting that I do need to get some updates on dates of start and impact and phases, if they can give me any clarity. Um the the only timeline that I got over the phone was that it, this is going to be till about two thousand twenty-six. It's a long, long haul, this project. So we we're gonna be um looking at a lot of things to prepare for that.
Okay, that it?
That's it on the agenda, so.
That's it, sorry. Yep.
Geez, that was short and sweet there, Carolyn.
I tried. Well, I I knew I was gonna take up a lot of your time and you didn't want to hear any more from me tonight.
We will, we will always listen to you, no problem.
I'm remembering that.
Joyce, any announcements tonight?
Uh you know, I do have a couple. Is are we at announcements already? My goodness.
Yeah.
So I'd like to extend uh the select board condolences to Arthur Munt's family. He was a uh one of our uh Hadley residents. Um family of David Haskell, we extend our condolences to him. And um I didn't do quite justice to um David Farnum that had passed away. Um I know that I said he was on the Board of Health, but David, since he had moved to town, had become really a Hadley resident. He may not have been a local Hadley resident, but he certainly made himself well known from the time that he came into Hadley. He was a, he was one of our Cub Scout leaders. He did Little League coaching. Uh he was on Park and Rec for many years. He was also on the school board. And then the last twenty-four years he spent on the Board of Health. So David certainly did um give a lot of time to Hadley. He was also on the Neuwattic Rail Trail Advisory Committee. And if you ever walk the rail trail at any time during the past ten years, um even though he was gonna be ninety, he was out there every day, either between here or UMass, walking around out there um doing his walk on a daily routine every morning. So um we certainly do extend our condolences to Michael Farnham and his family on the passing of Dave. He was a well um really appreciated man here in Hadley. So are certainly our condolences to him and his family. And that's it for me tonight.
Anybody else? Jane?
A reminder that tomorrow morning is the last time to sign up for tickets for the roast beef dinner, which is being cooked by Katie Day, um Stevie Devine and uh like Pete Ben Ben. Um there, you can call me at the senior center or call anyone at the senior center and leave your name and we'll get you on the list. It's a to-go dinner to be picked up Sunday between three and four and you can reheat it whenever you want because we're not sending it out hot given the current weather.
Can you uh put me for five, Jane?
I've got you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, uh Jane, put me down for one more also.
Okay.
Amy, can we do one more call for um annual report dedication and the Fred Oakley Award, please?
Yes. When did I need?
A couple. Um I'd like them by Friday, but you know, we can, we can flex on that a little bit, but I would like them very soon so I can get going on the annual report.
And they just need to send an email to info@hadleyamate.org?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, well, if there's nothing else, then I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Alright, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. Jennifer, roll call, please.
Rogue Hall, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
And Wes Kevits?
Yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.